We will now begin our council study session for the morning of October the 15th. I'll again note that our council is present with the exception of Mr. Heredia, who I believe is going to join us momentarily.
I think he's here, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Frank, are you with us?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. First item on our agenda for this meeting is to review and discuss items on the agenda for the October 19th council meeting. So council, please refer to that document. Council, are you, are there any requests for additional information or for any questions regarding this agenda? Yes, Mr. Luna.
Yes, I was wondering if Mary, Chief Kamelika, talked about 3H, about the routers?
Thank you. I bet she was hoping someone would ask that question.
Yeah, I told her, hey, talk to me about those routers. I'm interested, this is cool.
Mayor, council, Mayor Councilmember Luna, members of the council, thank you for asking the question. So these vehicle routers, what they do is they provide service to two different Wi-Fi networks. So if one goes down, the other one is available. It's for AT&amp;T FirstNet and for Verizon. Not only does it connect to the computers on the truck, but it's also for electronic patient care reporting. It also will have the ability to, for connectivity for drones in the future and also our heart monitors with these cradle points. We will be able to send telemetry to the hospitals just through Wi-Fi with these cradle points.
Mr. Luna, you're muted.
Sorry about that, Mayor. This is great information, I'm excited that you're doing this, Chief. I know we're trying to keep pace with technology and this is a way to communicate with our hospitals or those entities that really need our service right away, so, as well as communicating with each other, so. So thank you for that, Chief, and of course, I'd be in support of this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, you council. Any other questions regarding the October 19th agenda? Okay, seeing none, the next agenda item for this meeting is item 2A, that's a hear a presentation and discuss the 2020 bond program, including defeasance, new issuances, and refundings.
Mayor?
Real quickly, I apologize, I didn't jump in fast enough. I just want the council to know that on Monday, we're going to be adding one item to the agenda at the very end. It's a plat that just was approved by P&amp;Z. It's referred to as the Eastridge Manor, sorry, Eastridge Manor plat, it's 32 single-family homes. So that is not on your draft agenda, it just was approved by P&amp;Z last night, so we've been asked to move this forward, so just, I just want you to know there'll be another item under Section 7. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Matt, Mr. Brady, where would that be at? What's the crossroads for that development?
It would be, it's in the Eastridge subdivision, which is Paz and Guadalupe, Mr. Thompson, more or less.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think that's, yes.
Thank you.
Brady, would this be an example, I know a week ago, we were talking about approval of plats perhaps not coming, I mean, being dealt with more administratively than council?
Mayor, council, no, for final plats, actually, the state statute requires it to come to the city council. So the discussion we had last couple of weeks, that's specific to side plans, which is different from final plats.
Right. Thank you. All right, well, that's noted, Mr. Brady, thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up item 6A. I know there's been a lot of correspondence and citizen concern about the development, and I didn't know if we're going to have the presentation or any discussion that we need to have for the public. I'm fine not discussing it today, but I didn't know if we're going to do that whether today or next week, or just going to just leave it on consent until otherwise, I was just wondering how that was going to work.
Yeah, great question, you're right. I am expecting that the public will appear and take it off the consent agenda, so I do expect that we'll have a live presentation from the applicant and hear from staff during the public hearing on Monday.
Okay, Monday's fine.
Yeah. Brady, do you think we need a, in anticipation of that, do we need any, a presentation from staff or from the applicant prior to Monday?
You know, Mayor, yeah, Mayor, we obviously, we're prepared at any time to brief the council. I think what may be helpful, the applicant is available even right today if council needed it, but certainly, I think it would help to have maybe staff provide a brief presentation from the perspective of why it was recommended by staff. You could probably have a presentation from the applicant, and then it would be good, as we know, most likely, we're going to have several questions or concerns raised by the residents in the area, and then we could be able to address those. I know that Nana is ready to address it from the compatible zoning standpoint, our transportation department is ready to answer questions regarding traffic, traffic impact in that area. So whenever council would like us to do that, if you'd like us to be prepared to kind of do maybe a quick, brief discussion before the meeting on Monday, and then we could certainly do it again in the council session, if you'd like us, it's your preference, but we're ready to, are on the city staff side, ready to give you information. We have, and I know the applicant stands ready to also present to the city council.
What I might suggest is, I have heard some feedback from the neighborhood that adjacent to this proposed project, that they were wondering why the applicant, you know, got so, a large opportunity to present, and the zoning lawyer, you know, appeared to have, you know, unfettered ability to explain and to lobby the council, and they felt like maybe they were a little disadvantaged in that, so maybe just so that it, it's, we give assurances that no one has more access than another, why don't we just wait for the hearing on Monday? And we'll have the applicant and any neighbors or public members that want to weigh in via Zoom and/or have their comments read. We'll just do it all during the formal council meeting on Monday, so that no one feels like they're, they've not been given, you know, the same opportunity as someone else. Does that sound okay to you? Okay, so that, I think the neighborhood has already been, I've tried to communicate that to the neighborhood, making sure they know that we're, that everyone who wants to be heard on this will be given all the time that they want. But if we, we'll just by saying this today, maybe reiterate that, so that they know that we'll, we'll just plan on taking some time on Monday to hear all sides on this. Okay, thank you for bringing, raising that question, Councilmember Duff. Council, anything else on Monday's agenda before we move on? Okay, thank you. Then again, item 2A on our agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation and discuss the 2020 bond program, including defeasance, new issuances, and refundings. Mr. Brady, I believe we're going to hear from Ryan Wimmer, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. He's ready to give a presentation with, that we've gone to Audit and Finance Committee with, but we wanted to bring this to the full council, as you saw on the agenda for Monday, there is a few items that are related to this briefing. Ryan?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Wimmer, the City Treasurer. I'm here to discuss the 2020 bond program. I'd like to first start with why the city has a bond program, and it's really to support the city's capital improvement program. So every year, as part of the budget process, capital projects are approved in the annual update of the capital improvement program. And the funding source for most of the, of those capital improvement projects is bond The city has a, really a team that works on bond and this financing process. There's quite a few internal staff that are involved, and in addition, we, the city contracts with a financial advisor, and Larry Given and Janelle Gold from Hilltop Securities are those that advise us, and they're on the call, or they're on, in the meeting today by audio, so if we have questions, we can consult with them. Also, Zach Sakis with Sherman Howard is the city's bond counselor, bond attorney, and they work, they don't work for the city, but they spend a lot of their time working, working for the city's financing processes. So each year, this financing team, we evaluate the needs to sell bonds, we issue bonds to finance budgeted capital projects, and then we look for savings, we're always looking for savings to refund and refinance, or refinance existing bonds at lower interest rates over the same timeframe. We also use available cash to defees existing debt, and that's usually impact fee, development fee cash that accrue, that builds up. And then we also retire or pay off bonds that mature or come due. So what is a bond? Essentially, a bond is a financial instrument that represents a loan made by investor, investors to a borrower. And it's the most common method for cities to finance infrastructure. The infrastructure is paid for while it's in use, and that's, that's an important feature of bonds, is that it provides for this concept of intergenerational or interperiod equity, which basically mean it's fair for the people that are using the infrastructure to pay for it. So those, those that live here and work here during the time the infrastructure's being used are paying for it when it's financed, like bonds finance the infrastructure. And the way bonds work, the city borrows the money by selling bonds to investors, and then the bond proceeds are used to construct city projects, city infrastructure, and the city pays bond principal and interest back to the investors. So that principal and interest payments that the city makes back to the investors is called debt service. Usually, the debt service is, the life of the bonds is 20 to 25 years typically, and so we pay debt service that long on each bond issuance. The structure of the new debt service is coordinated or fit with the existing debt to maintain stable payments from year to year, so we're trying to avoid big swings from one year to the next that make it difficult to budget and forecast. And the city's financial forecast that you see each year as part of the budget process, it includes debt service for both the existing debt, but also anticipated future issuances. So we assume a certain level of issuance in future years as well in the forecast. In 2020, obviously, a different year due to the pandemic, we were, we typically issue bonds each year in the spring. In 2020, there was a delay in that process because of the pandemic, which hit in February or March, and it resulted in, you know, unfavorable market conditions, meaning really the bond market froze up, the investors, everyone was just afraid to do anything, and so they were really sitting on the sidelines, and no, no bonds were able to be sold during that time because the markets just weren't functioning. And since then, markets have basically normalized, they returned, they're functioning normally again, and so these issuances are, we've pushed them to these, this November, December timeframe for the 2020 issuances. We're still planning on issuing or moving forward with the 2021 issuance process in the spring of 2021, so the normal timeframe. Some of the, some examples of the projects funded with general obligation bonds, here on the top left of the screen is the picture of the Mesa Drive project, the top right is the Fire Station 221 out at Eastmark, and the bottom right there is the North Center Street Athletic Fields. So these are some examples of projects that are being financed with the 2020 general obligation bonds. In your packets, there are lists of additional projects in each area that are anticipated to be funded with these, these bonds that are being issued this year. Here's a list of the, the 2020 general obligation bond sale. The 22 million we're proposing to issue by purpose, you can see, and in that, in that second to last bold column, the amounts for streets, library, parks, and culture, and public safety. And then following this sale, the remaining authorization that would be left after the sale is there in the last column on the right. A little bit more about general obligation bonds, they're secured by the full faith and credit of the city, which is understood to mean the property tax authority and power of the city. They are paid for primarily with the secondary property tax revenue, and projects were submitted to voters most recently in 2018 for Parks and Culture and Public Safety. The issuance process, the way it works is that the city negotiates with a bank, an underwriting bank, they purchase the entire bond offering, and then they turn around and sell those bonds to investors, typically institutions like mutual funds and insurance Some of the 2020 utility systems revenue bond projects that would be financed with these bonds, the bulk of it, the biggest project is the finishing up the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant expansion, there's a picture on the left there. And then the other largest pieces of this utility bond issuance are going to improvements to existing infrastructure, water lines, wastewater lines, electric and gas improvements. This table shows the breakdown of the, the utility bond issuance by purpose, in the bold column again, for electric, natural, natural gas, wastewater, and water, you see the amounts proposed there, and you can see the largest amount, more than half, is wastewater due to the plant. And then in the last column on the right, you see the remaining authorization that would be left after the sale. Little bit more about utility bonds, they are used to finance utility infrastructure, they're secured or guaranteed by that revenue, by utility systems revenue from ratepayers. They're paid for primarily from revenues from utility rates, and projects were submitted most recently to voters in 2014. The same process is used to issue these bonds as the general obligation bonds, we negotiate with an underwriter, with a bank that buys them and then turns around and sells them to investors. And that's because we get the best rate by using that process. So savings, the finance team, we're constantly looking for opportunities to reduce the cost of the debt and to maximize financing opportunities, to make the most of the city's debt. So when we achieve financing cost savings, really, that, since this debt is paid for by ratepayers and secondary property taxpayers, that ultimately accrues to there, and it allows for more funding to be available for projects. And so these bullets here are from prior, previously in the presentation, but we, the two ways really that we are able to achieve savings are through refundings and defeasances. And one point I want to make on the refundings, when we refund bonds or refinance bonds, they're, they're issued at, over the same timeframe, so, for example, if a bond has 10 years left on it, we will issue the refunding bonds for 10 years. So the timeframe doesn't change, just the interest rate is lower, and so the interest costs are lower. And this is, this is a chart of interest rates on U.S. Treasury bonds, so it's the cost for the U.S. government to borrow money. On the left, the vertical column is, are the interest rates, and on the bottom, the horizontal column is the term or the length of the bond. And you can see in the green line there, in 2010, interest rates were significantly higher than today in 2020. So when we're doing these refundings, the reason we're getting so much savings is because interest rates are much lower in general in the market, and this is for U.S. bonds, but it really drives the rates that the city receives on its, in its debt. So the good news here is that this is the estimated savings for these, this year's refundings and defeasance. The first, the general obligation bonds, we're estimating will save $5 million, and those are in present value dollars, the nominal dollars are higher, but these are conservative estimates in present value dollars, so $5 million for the general obligation bonds. And for the utility systems revenue bonds, in July of this year, we used, for defeasance, we used $15 million of impact fee revenue that had accrued, that had built up, to defees or to pay off, to pay off $15 million of utility debt, which saved us interest of $2 million on, in a present value basis. Then coming up, this, in this-
Excuse me, Ryan?
Yes?
Mr. Freeman has a question for you.
Hi, Ryan, thank you. I can't let you go without asking a question. On the refunding for the GO bonds, is that a, just help me understand, the refunding portion, will that be, again, interest savings? So what is our current interest rate for the GO bonds, and what do you anticipate it being, going down to, for the savings that you're estimating? Is that a fair question?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, yes, that's a, that's a great question. The save, the current rate on the bonds is fairly high, because in 2010, rates were pretty high. In addition, they're taxable bonds, which there was an O R grant from the government, which allowed us to issue the bonds and being reimbursed for part of the interest, so, so the rates are like 5%, 6%, 4%, 5%, 6%. They're very, they're pretty high. So when we refund the bonds, we expect to get, we're saying conservatively 2% or 3%. We're saying conservatively 2% or 3%, the rates are actually a little bit lower than that right now, but we don't, we try to add a little cushion in there in case rates go up between now and when we issue in November.
Okay, so is this GO bond, is it a conglomerate or a package of bonds that you're putting together for the refunding request? Therefore, you get the savings on the interest, and therefore, that savings is passed on to us as taxpayers and within the city? So is it, are these tiers of GO bonds that are becoming available for the refunding?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, these bonds that we're refunding, talking about refunding this year, were issued in 2010.
Okay.
They had a maturity of 2030, so they were coming due in 2030. What we'll do is, we'll sell, we'll sell new bonds, 30 million or so of new bonds, and we'll pay off those old bonds that are doing, that are due in 2030, and we'll issue new bonds that are still due in 2030, but the interest rate on the bonds, instead of being 5% or 6%, they're going to be 2% or 3%. So overall, over that 10 years, that's remaining on the, on the bond schedule, you can think of it like half a million dollars a year, because we're saving $5 million overall, and there's, there's 10 years, so every year, we're saving in interest costs a total of $5 million over those 10 years.
Okay, so just one other question then. The savings on those GO bonds, we can't pay off, if we have 10 years left on those bonds, do we take the monies that would be paying those off, put them in like an escrow account, so that in the future, we pay them off, or is it paid off currently?
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, what happens with that savings? That's a good question. Basically, it, the next time we issue, we'll use that savings to pay off additional principal of the new bonds we're issuing each year. And so that saves us more interest, because we're not paying interest on those bonds for as long as we anticipated. So in the end, it saves interest costs by reallocating those savings to pay off additional new bonds. And the place that that comes out in the wash later on is when, whenever the levy is reset, we usually keep it flat year to year until there's a bond authorization like this one that's on the ballot in 2020 for streets. And when we reset the levy for that, for that authorization, we usually just reset it once, then we would net out that savings, or we would, it'll be a little bit lower than it otherwise would have been if we hadn't done these-
So Ryan, what happens is the calculation you'll do each year for our total debt service payment gets impacted by the savings. The savings is rolling, rolling out for the next-
10 years.
10 years. So in our schedule, every year, we look at what is our principal and interest payment each year, with all the outstanding bonds we have, whether they're issued, well, 2008 till today, whatever it is. And so we will account for that in each time we calculate our principal and interest payment each year. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this will help mitigate against future, I mean, if not, if we didn't sell any additional bonds going forward, in effect, from the previous schedule, we had a payment of principal and interest, this would slightly decrease. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, the way that I would think about it is, where we would have been paying a little bit of more, we would have been paying interest each year, we're going to put a little bit more principal in that hole that was created, which offset, which creates even more savings. So that's how we use the savings, we pay off a little more principal than we otherwise would have earlier in the, in the schedule of new, of new bonds that we're issuing.
Okay, thank you, Ryan, Mr. Brady, and thank you, Mayor. Those are all questions I have.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Yeah, since we've passed, so along those lines of the savings and how that's refactored in the current, you know, new bonds that we're issuing and such, so does that also factor into, therefore, the rate or the amount that we're collecting in secondary property tax? How does that flow down into the secondary property tax, or does it?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So the savings eventually, whenever we reset the levy, and that may be next year, if these bonds pass, the street bonds pass in 2020, we'll reset the levy in 2021, and then we would, we would basically lower the levy to recognize that savings. And so the next year, the rates, ratepayers, secondary property tax ratepayers would see the savings in their rate. Now, it would be, it would be going up, because the 2020 street bonds would result in additional debt service, but the increase for those 2020 street bonds would be lower than it otherwise would have been if we didn't have the savings.
Thank you, and that makes sense. The other question I had were a few slides back, I didn't want to stall it, but there was a delay in issuing bonds earlier in the year because of the economic condition, and we're doing that now. Did that also delay or defer projects? I assume it did, until it was a better economic condition to take out those bonds?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the answer is gladly no. The timing of the issuances doesn't affect the projects, because the IRS, the federal government, allows us to reimburse costs, so we can pay for them out of our own cash, and then reimburse ourselves up to a year and a half later. And so we have this, this timing cushion that we can basically, you know, big cushion, so we don't ever, we don't ever let the timing of issuances affect the work on projects. So they continued unaffected by this delay.
Great, that's good to know, thank you.
So to finish up on this refunding discussion, or the savings discussion, the second refunding that we'll be planning this year is in the utility system revenue bonds, the savings we're estimating is $10 million. So the total savings in 2020 from the two refundings and the defeasance are estimated to be about $17 million. And that, like I said, that's conservative, it may be higher, it may be, it may be lower based on the market conditions. The bonds will price in November, and so it'll really be determined by the market conditions in November. So the timeline for, for those, these transactions on your agenda on Monday, you'll see four items, one for a general obligation bond issuance, one for general obligation bond refunding, and one for a utility revenue bond issuance, and another for a utility revenue bond refunding. As I mentioned, they'll be priced in mid-November, and then the proceeds will be received by the city, the transactions will be closed on December 10th. Thank you, Mayor, that's my presentation.
Mayor and council, we also, we should mention, I think we put, I know we mentioned this to public safety, sorry, Audit and Finance, sorry. But while we have already received authorization from this council to proceed forward with our financing for the issue at City Mesa, sorry, at City Center, so that will also be included in the work, in the, in the work that will be done in the market, in selling in the market, will be going to the market. But that will not have any action by council on Monday, but I just want you to know that that is included in the effort, as far as us going to market, will include the financing for that. And I think I've shared with the council, that's a $73.5 million project, $10 million in-. and a half million dollar project, $10 million coming from ASU. Then we've also contributed nearly $21 million in cash from land sales, from a variety of land sales. So the financing for the, for the excise tax for the remaining portion of the ASU building is 43 point.
42.8.
42.8 million dollars. So that's reduced what we anticipated initially at a five to six million dollar per year debt service payment. Now we're down to an estimated amount of.
Three millions or.
Three million. So we've cut, we think we've cut that in half with the cash contributions. Obviously, we'll continue to look for additional, if we have any additional land sales in the near future, we'll apply that to this project also. But I just want to give you, that's not in this presentation, but it will be because it's already been approved by council. But it will be part of the sell us going to market will include that component. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Well, keep our fingers crossed that the market conditions remain the same for a while and we can get these, these bonds out at those good interest rates. Counsel, any other questions on this topic? Yes, Mr. Heredia?
Really quick, just to go back, Ryan, to the, the tax levy. If the bonds pass this November, you, you change the levy at what time next year? And then it's in effect for how many years after that?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the tax levy gets adopted annually. So it gets adopted. Really, it's kind of, think of it on the same timeframe as the budget. It comes two weeks after the budget's adopted. So it gets adopted in, say, June for the following fiscal year. So that's, that's when you'll see it next is in June of 2021 for fiscal year 21, 22. And then each, each June for the following fiscal year.
And it was, remind me, last year, even though we passed, voters passed a bond in 18, last year, did we see a decrease on the levy for residents?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the 2018 voter authorization would have been included in the property tax the year before. So last year, it would have been, this, this past year, the levy would not have changed because, yeah, so it was the prior year, but this year.
Okay.
So, but let's, let's, let's walk through this just a little quick. These are great questions because we, we do talk about the levy. So that's the actual payment that's required to pay off the outstanding principal and interest that's due in a particular year. What determines what a lot of times what we'll hear is we try to maintain the levy fairly constant so we don't have a lot of ups and downs in our schedule of payments in the future. We do that on purpose. When I first got here, we had some significant ups and downs, and it created a lot of stress inside the budget process. So we've tried to maintain a fairly smooth levy. Now, again, the levy is the payment. What a lot of times you'll hear from your constituents, though, is their concern not, well, it could be the levy, but it's also the rate, the property tax rate. And remember, the rate is a function of what is the, what needs to be applied to the overall property tax base to achieve the levy. The good news for Mesa is that we have, as we continue to see new growth and strong property values, it, it helps to mitigate against any need to significantly adjust the rate. And some, there has been recently, I think sometimes when we slightly modify the rate down, because we can do that and still pay, make the same payment, but we may be able, as our property values grow with new growth, with new development, help spread that cost of the secondary property tax across more accounts. So with the continued robust development, especially in the non-residential side and the industrial manufacturing side, when those come on to the tax rolls in the next couple of years, we're hoping that will help us to keep those tax rate, property tax rates low. The levy remains the same, the, the principal and interest we pay, but hopefully that rate will, could be the same or a little less depending on the experience of the growth in the, in the, in the property tax base. Also, the good news is, if you look at the full, we call it the full cash value of property, property value in Mesa is, is, I don't know what the number is, but it is at a high, pretty high level. But what we're allowed to apply, to use to assess, to collect property tax is restricted by state law. And it's at a, it's a lower level. And we're only allowed, that's only allowed to grow, was it 5%?
Plus, yeah, 5% plus new growth.
5% plus new growth. The City of Mesa has a very large ceiling capacity that will, every year, that can grow by 5% without hitting our, our cap. And that's very attractive to our bond rating agencies. They like to see that we have, without really having to change people's values on their homes, that we could, that can grow quite a bit over the next five to six years.
And Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, if I could add to what Chris is saying, as an example, the, the levy in both fiscal year 1920 and fiscal year 2021 was 41.7 million. So it was held flat. The rate dropped, which you'd expect because of the new growth and the refunding savings we've had in prior years, the rate dropped from a $1.18 to a $1.11 per $100 of net assessed value, per taxable value. And so the net effect, and I saw this on my property tax in Mesa, is, was essentially a two and a half percent decrease for, for existing homeowners to their, to their rate, to their bill, really. Yeah, because the, the rate went down 7%. So their, their levy or their bill went down two and a half percent.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, other, other questions? Thank you. I think that, that's, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. I just thought, you know, we got to keep this simple for people in our community to understand it because they, you know, I've gotten a lot of calls recently because when the tax bills just came out, our property taxes, they said the city is, you know, we're, we're overcharging for our taxes in our city. And I said, no, we're not. Look at, look at our tax rate within our city. Look at your itemized bill and see what you're actually paying. So I, I'm sure all of us have gotten some input from people in our community where in other areas, it's really gone up very high in our tax assessment, in our, in our schooling and other areas. So with that, I appreciate keeping it simple so that everybody can understand it, especially me. I, I, I'm a simple guy. I just do, I'm just a dumb farmer guy. So I'm trying to understand it all.
That's, that's obviously not true, Mr. Freeman. You're, you, thank you for reminding us that we need to, to explain this in simple terms for all of us because none of us are, you know, we only got one Brian Wimmer in the city and, and the rest of us are struggling to understand this. But I, I had a similar experience to what you're describing, Mr. Freeman, when I got my property tax bill and I was looking through it. And there's certainly some sticker shock associated with, with looking at that bill. And, you know, it's for thousands of dollars and it, it doesn't feel good. But I did appreciate the, the kind of truth in lending, you know, language that was on that, that explanation. And the City of Mesa, you know, it said, how much of this is going to city government? And, and as everyone knows, Mesa is unique in that we're the largest city in the United States without a primary property tax. And so the closer I looked at that bill, the better I felt about, you know, the City of Mesa really stood out among all of the taxing entities as obviously the most frugal and, and having the least impact on, on my property tax bill. So, yeah, I think that the closer people look at that document, the better they'll feel about the way the City of Mesa is, is impacting them from a property tax perspective. And I, again, I just, it's, it's, times are good when, when we've got billion dollar companies, you know, coming to your city and building multi-billion dollar facilities that really has the, the impact of increasing our overall tax assessment. And that lowers our tax rates, you know, for the average homeowner. So, so this is a great, yeah, a great discussion. I'm glad we had it. And for folks in the public that are concerned about this issue, I think the more they look into it, the better, the better they'll feel about the way the City of Mesa is impacting their, their property taxes. All right. Any other discussion? Thank you. Hearing none. The next item on our agenda, item 2B, is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the city's recycling program. I know Scott Boucher is there. Mr. Boucher, we've been looking forward to this presentation and for quite a while and getting caught up on this important topic.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Scott Boucher, I'm the environmental sustainability, environmental management sustainability director here at the City of Mesa. And I'm here today, as you mentioned, Mayor, to give you a recycling update. First, I want to kind of go back in time about a year to kind of set how we got to the position we're in right now. So if you recall, in September of 2019, we came forward with two contract extensions, one with United Fibers and one with Republic Services. These were extensions of existing recycling contracts that we had within the City of Mesa. And we had a pretty long discussion about the increased costs that we were seeing associated with recycling. But council at that time said they were committed to recycling. And so we did those two extensions. And at that time, we had three separate contracts, as you can see, with three separate facilities that were strategically located around the City of Mesa that we were able to bring all of our recycling material to them. Now, because of the increasing costs that we were seeing, at that same time, we had conversations about changes that we were going to, changes that we recommended we make to our recycling program. Those included optimizing some of our recycling routes, increased enforcement. So we had a long discussion about major contamination, residents that are using their blue barrel really is a second black barrel. And we defined five waste, that if we saw those waste, we could remove those barrels immediately. In addition to that, we did a rebranding of the recycling program, trying to focus on materials that had value and that we knew would be recycled. So we switched that to beverage bottles, jugs and cans, food cans, cardboard and paper. And at that time, we also, we shut down our recycling drop off centers. And so at this time, I was, I was optimistic that the City of Mesa was in a good position going forward with recycling and that we'd be able to lead through the challenges that we were seeing. The next month, in October of 2019, there was a significant fire that was a total loss for Republic Services at the Salt River landfill. So as you can see, that's a facility that we brought 60% of our recyclable materials to and had just done a contract extension with Republic Services. And that facility burned down, as I said, in October of 2019. Less than 30 days later, in November of 2019, we reserved a, we received a six month termination notice from Waste Management, who was one of our other recycling contractors that we had at the time. Now, we had been negotiating with Waste Management on terms associated with that contract. We were approximately halfway through a 10 year contract associated with the recycling. I included some of those terms that they were insisted upon having. They wanted a significant increase in the processing fee going from $63 to $132 a ton. And this included a new transportation fee that they were going to charge the City of Mesa, an increase in our contamination fee from $29 to $40 a ton, and then a decrease in our revenue share from 60% to 50%. In addition to that, there were a couple of terms in there that the city was not comfortable with. One of them was that Waste Management reserved the right to change what was acceptable in our, in their recycling facilities with 60 days' notice to the city. There was no representations or assurances that the material would actually be recycled. And then in addition to that, they reserved the right to be able to increase the price for the City of Mesa based on several different increases that they may see in their cost. And so because of this, we were unable to come to an agreement with Waste Management on this contract. And they had submitted that six month termination. Then if you go back to, to March of 2020, we've just had the conversation about COVID and how it affected the bond market. It also affected us in solid waste pretty significantly. One of the first calls I made was to Waste Management to see if they would delay the termination of the contract. They said that they would not delay that termination. And then what we saw immediately as soon as stay at home orders were happening in March was a significant increase in the amount of tonnage. And I have the next slide, I have a chart, which I'll describe it more. But we really saw an instantaneous, significant increase in our solid waste tonnage that we were collecting on the, on the residential side. In addition to that, if you remember back to March of 2020, there was significant uncertainty, both from a staffing perspective, hoping for, you know, not knowing the health of our operators and what would be happening with, with them, and then also budget uncertainty that was happening at that time. So this chart here will show you, if you look, the, the blue is 2018, the kind of orange color is 2019, and then green is 2020. You see that significant jump that happens in March of 2020. And this is our ASL black barrel. So this is what the amount of tonnage that was collected in the black barrel. As you can see, year to year, there's seasonality to this. We have increases at Christmas time and spring training time, and then decreases during the summer months in our tonnage. But it, it tracks. And then you see that there's also growth that happens. So we do see increases in our tonnage year to year. But that first week that we had the stay at home orders in March, we saw an increase of nearly 20% of what we were collecting as far as solid waste tonnage in the black barrel. And as you can see, it's leveled off a little bit, but we're still seeing increases that are in excess of 8% of what we have collected historically. And so with this, this is where there really was a lot of pressure. And I'd like to thank the, the folks within the department who, you know, the, the first day with the stay at home, when we went home as city employees, I, I woke up and went to my, to my kitchen table with a laptop. But we had 75 employees that came in that day and continued to provide that uninterrupted service to the residents of the City of Mesa. And so I would like to thank them for that. But as you can see, this is where, what really drove our decision to combine the blue and green barrels together is that there was a lot of concern about being able to service our residents and make sure that we're able to pick up those barrels every day, all of the barrels every day that we service them. So going forward, I, I have a couple of things. We're, we're going to discuss short term solutions. And then we've also been working with ASU on what might be potential long term solutions for the City of Mesa. First with the short term solutions, we have had discussions with United Fibers, their contract extension. We, council in September approved a one year extension that expires at the end of this year. So in December of, of 2020, they have agreed to an additional one year extension of their existing contract at $85 a ton with a 55% revenue share. But they do have a limit for us of only 6,000 tons that we can bring to their facility on an annual basis. The current cost, because there are other cities that are bringing material to United Fibers, and just in our discussions of what they're seeing as far as commodity prices, and then what we've seen historically with contamination, we're looking at a cost of somewhere between $50 to $60 a ton is what we anticipate it will cost with United Fibers. In addition to that, we've had conversations with Republic Service. They are anticipating rebuilding their facility at the Salt River landfill, and they're anticipating that it should be operational by quarter three of 2021, that they will be up and operational. We still have time associated with that contract. That contract extension that you approved in September of last year runs through 2022. And so they have said that they will honor that current contract. And for that, we have a minimum requirement of 12,000 tons that we can bring to them. They have indicated that they could accept more than those 12,000 tons. And our current contract is at $86 a ton with a 60% revenue share. So to prepare for recycling and what we might do, we also resumed our barrel inspections, but we have not been doing enforcement. So really, we've been out looking with our quality assurance inspectors and doing a pulse project is what we have called it, where we're looking inside the bins and just seeing what does the contamination look like in both the green and the blue barrels. As you can see, with the green barrels, they're relatively clean. We've been very pleased with our, our green barrel customers and them continuing to put the appropriate materials in that green barrel. Almost 90% of them, we would consider clean. And only about 9% of them would, would meet that removal threshold that I discussed earlier. The blue barrels is, is a little bit different. We, there's about 30% of them that we have seen that are clean, and then 56% that would require some form of education. Now, some of this goes back to the changes that we did with our recycling program, where there's some materials that were accepted previously before September of last year that maybe residents just haven't quite cottoned on to the changes. And it's understandable with everything that has happened. But then in addition to that, there's about 14% of those blue barrels that would meet that major cont. that major contamination standard that would be removed from the resident, because essentially there's, there's trash in those blue barrels. We're ready to, to split the blue and green barrel collection, and the green barrel material would go to our current vendors. We still do have contracts in place with those current vendors. And the blue material would go to United Fibers in the beginning, and then once Republic Services is up and operational, we would be able to begin bringing them material also. If we do decide to split the green and blue, we will definitely have to go back to the need to reinstate the enforcement program that Council had approved. We will go back to our, you know, trying to educate the, the residents first, but residents that really are using it as a second trash barrel, we're, we're going to have to start removing those. We have proposed, we, we would propose that we give maybe the same as what we did last, last year, give the residents a couple of months for us to get the word out that the recycling is coming back and, but come January of 2021, that the enforcement program would be back in full effect. So, long-term solutions, we've been working with Arizona State University and evaluating four different options. And these options, it, it's possible they could be phased in, or it could be a mixture of these options, so they're not mutually exclusive of each other. These were, option one, we called business as usual, which is continuing to partner, partner with private entities that own recycling facilities. Option two was for the City of Mesa to build its own recovery facility, a full-size MRF. Option three was regional partnerships and looking at what other cities might have as far as infrastructure, and what the City of Mesa might be able to build as far as infrastructure, and how we could partner to leverage that infrastructure together. And then option four is a little bit different. This is something we became aware of in 2019. WasteCon, which was one of the large solid waste conferences, was here in Phoenix. There was a group called Revolution Systems that has a, what, what we've termed a mini-MRF, so it's smaller facilities that take less tonnage but are less expensive to build. And we've been working with a group called Closed Loop on kind of defining the cost associated with those types of systems. So in addition to that, so in order to build something like this, if the City of Mesa was to build its own infrastructure for solid waste, we, we looked at three different locations that we could possibly locate these types of facilities. That would be our Center Street Yard, which many of you are familiar with, that's where our household hazardous materials facility is. There's the East Mesa Service Center, and then there's an additional, there's a, a property that the city owns at Pecos and Sauserman. And as you can see, this provides good coverage, again, similar to the, to the map that I showed at the beginning, it gives us good coverage across the City of Mesa. So I'll go into each one of these options that we looked at and kind of lay out what we anticipate the cost would be, and then the pros and cons associated with these options. The business as usual is, is what we've been doing, and as I said, we're looking at costs somewhere between $50 and $70 a ton for those. And we currently have two contracts with Republic Services and United Fibers that run through 2022. The, the advantages of doing this is that there is no capital or labor needed for the City of Mesa in these. So the private entities are the ones who have to build the, the facilities, and they have to staff those facilities, and the City of Mesa pays a processing fee and then receives revenue back. The, the disadvantages are that we don't control the pricing or the marketing of the materials, and as I've stated earlier, it's very difficult to understand whether or not the materials are actually being recycled after they're delivered to the facility. And then competition amongst the private companies does not appear to be driving cost savings. What I mean by that is, we have consistently been approached, as one vendor asks for a price increase, other vendors are following behind, asking for similar price increases. So the competition hasn't been driving down the price, it seems to have driven up over the last several years. So that is, is a disadvantage. And then the other portion of it is, with the City of Mesa, we don't own any post-collection facilities. And what I mean by that is, we pick up material from our customers, whether it's our residential or commercial customers that we service, and then we bring it to somebody else. We don't own transfer stations, we don't own a landfill, we don't own any recycling facilities. So we're dependent upon other entities in order for us to be able to take care of that material that we pick up and transport. And then there is risk associated with this, and you'll see in all of these options, I have risk listed as one of the cons, and with recycling, one of the big risks is that value of the commodity prices. That's where we have seen significant swings in what the value of those commodities are. And so in order to prepare for that, it, it's very difficult, because if you see a swing of $20 or $40 a ton, that's a significant impact on the City of Mesa's budget. If it's, you know, we're making more money because the values are higher, it's great, but when you see those values drop, it definitely becomes more expensive for the City of Mesa. And then with China and the bans that they have put in place on recycling materials, we are seeing a trend that other countries who have imported historically recyclable materials from the United States are looking at similar bans or stringent contamination standards for material coming from the United States and going to their countries. And so it's unknown what effect that might have on pricing if other countries follow in China's footsteps as far as restrictions on material. For a full-size materials recovery facility or MRF, the City of Mesa would construct a MRF. These are the large ones, like what was burned down at, at Salt River landfill. Capital cost for this is somewhere between $30 and $38 million. It can handle 30,000 to 60,000 tons of recyclable material is the capacity that these types of facilities have. We're estimating a cost of somewhere between $60 and $160 a ton for the processing cost. And why there is such a large range in there is because the facility can handle up to 60,000 tons, but the City of Mesa only produces 32,000 tons. So as you can see, if you build this large facility and the capital cost associated with it, but you don't, if you've only got half the capacity that you're running through, that cost per ton is significantly higher. So for something like this to make sense, we would really need to partner with another city or two even, in order to get enough throughput through this type of facility to make it make sense from an economic standpoint. We estimate it would be four to six years to build this type of facility. The advantages of this are that we, we would own our own facility, and that we could accept all of the City of Mesa's recyclable materials. There is potential, like I said, for regional partnerships to accept the materials from other cities. We have, would have more control over the cost, I think, because we would have that ownership, but the, there is a large capital investment that would need to be made. There would be a necessity of having transfer stations so that we could transfer material to bring it to the MRF, just to have one location within the City of Mesa would be difficult for us to direct deliver with our trash trucks. We would more than likely need another facility to transfer that material and bring it to the MRF. And again, those same risks that I just discussed earlier as far as market fluctuations and what might happen with the, the value of the commodities.
Scott, before, before we move to the next topic, I know Mr. Freeman has a question for you.
Scott, on that subject, great presentation so far. If you're talking about a regional component, what would be the best location if you're looking at regional partnership? I'm sure that you've kind of brainstormed on that, and, but looking at the capital costs, that's kind of significant for that, and I think a partnership is needed. But regardless, is there an area of our city, we're a fairly large city, that that would be, that you've looked at?
The, the location for a full-size MRF that we think we have enough available space and would work for us as far as being able to possibly partner with others would be that Sauserman and Pecos area. It is right there with the Gilbert border. It's close to Queen Creek and Chandler, although they have private providers for their solid waste service. But that, that is the one location that we looked at. If we had a full-size MRF, it would be down at that Pecos and Sauserman location.
So are there other cities in the valley that have their own MRFs?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is a perfect question. The, the next slide that I have here is with regional partnership, so there are several cities that have their own MRFs. City of Phoenix would be one of them, so they have two MRFs, one of them up in North Phoenix. I believe it's, it's not Happy Valley, I, I get lost after Happy Valley Road, but it's up in that area in the I-17. And then they have another one that's at 27th Avenue and Lower Buckeye. In addition to that, the City of Glendale also has a MRF that is out by their landfill. So that's what we've looked at as far as a regional partnership, would be that the City of Mesa would construct transfer stations and provide funding to upgrade an existing regional MRF. And so as we look at these costs, we had some preliminary conversations about this concept with the City of Phoenix. We anticipate the capital cost, both for the upgrades and the transfer stations, would be somewhere between $20 and $25 million. It would be able to handle all of our tonnage, the 32,000 tons. We anticipate the processing cost would be somewhere between $35 to $65 a ton, and the timeframe for this would be somewhere between two and three years. The advantage is, is that this would create a long-term partnership, a long-term regional partnership, would reduce the amount of capital that would be needed as far as expenditures by taking advantage of existing facilities, and then there's less risk associated with that because of that, that lower capital investment. There are still some disadvantages far as control, but we would be working with the neighboring community, so I think that, you know, is, is helpful. There is a need for transfer stations, which does add an additional cost into that, but that was included in that processing fee cost that I had on the previous slide. And those same risks, again, I, I don't want to beat, beat it too much, but those same risks would exist as far as the materials and the value that they have.
Scott, before we move on, I think we do have a couple more questions. And I hope Councilmember Duff has a question, but before, let me ask you a quick question, Scott. It seems like the last two options you've given us, you know, where the city builds its own MRF, or we, we partner with the Phoenix facilities, they're, they're really just both regional proposals, because for, for our facility to be workable, you know, like, as you indicated, we'd be building it, you know, or overbuilding it by two or three times in anticipation of, of enticing other East Valley cities that perhaps at some point to join with us. So it seems like it's a choice between creating a new East Valley regional partnership or, or joining a, a West Valley or a Phoenix partnership. Is that a fair way to describe it?
Mayor, that is a, a fair way to describe that.
Okay, and do we have a, any sense of what the level of interest is for those, you know, Southeast Valley cities, you know, that, that would be, it would make sense for them to join, that the Chancellors, Gilberts, Queen Creeks are, any, any feeling, any sense of how willing they would be to be a part of that?
I, I can say with Chandler and Queen Creek, it is a little bit more difficult, because Chandler and Queen Creek do not provide their own solid waste services. So the City of Chandler is contracted with Waste Management, and even though Waste Management, so it, it's interesting, Waste Management collects the material in the City of Chandler, but delivers all of their material to United Fibers, that recycling facility that we just, that I described earlier, which is located within the City of Chandler. And so it's more difficult for them, but they do have some contracts that will be coming up. Queen Creek just recently signed a contract with Right-Away Disposal, which is another private company here in the valley, and Right-Away Disposal owns their own MRF that is a relatively small MRF, it can handle the amount of material that they bring to it themselves, but they don't have capacity for additional material. So with Queen Creek and Chandler, it is difficult, but the town of Gilbert, we've had preliminary discussions, they are definitely interested, they are in a similar type situation that we are with contracts, and so they would definitely be interested, even if it was with a full-size MRF, or if we did build transfer stations, if there was an ability for them to, to use them or partner with us in some way.
If we struck a partnership where it was only Mesa and Gilbert, would that, would that make sense? Would that give us enough materials to justify constructing that facility?
I, I believe with the City of Mesa and the town of Gilbert, they're, you know, we wouldn't be at full capacity, day one that we open up, but with the growth that both the City of Mesa and the town of Gilbert anticipate seeing over the next five, 10 years, I could see that that facility would, would get full use if both entities were bringing material, all of their material to it.
But it, it strikes me, we could have something similar to the, the Greenfield wastewater treatment plant, you know, where Mesa and Gilbert have really had, enjoyed a good partnership and, and been able to together build a, a real state-of-the-art facility, and it seems to be working well. I'm sorry, Councilmember Duff, I know you had a question.
No, it's along the same lines, but looking at the regional partnership and what the opportunities were with Phoenix, is this something that they are open to, something that they would like to partner with us if we joined in at, on their facility? So that is one part of the question.
Yes, so they, we have had those preliminary conversations with them, they are open to it. I think what we're looking for today is to get a sense from the Council on what you are interested in, and then we would go back and really try and get into the details of what a regional partnership would look more like. This is just a very preliminary, looking at cost, rough orders of magnitude on what construction costs would be, and so this is where we're, we're coming back and kind of presenting what options are available to us, and we would need to go back and then really work through details to be able to come back to Council and provide you a, a specific proposal on what we might do moving forward.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, let me just, I think the way, one way to look at it is, I don't know that we're asking you to choose among any of the three right now, we want to share with you, there's been a lot of questions about what, what is the future of recycling. We wanted to share with you where we are today and the, kind of the different pathways that we're considering. We still need to do a lot more due diligence on a variety, on all of these fronts. I mean, there may need to be kind of this short-term solution where we continue with contracts with the private sector, because they can be up and running sooner. The regional solutions are, need to be vetted out some more. We've had, we appreciate the healthy conversations we've had with our colleagues in the valley, and we want to continue that, but there hasn't been anything of significance that we could say, you know, now we can come back with a formal agreement. There's still a lot of work to be done. And certainly if the Council, I'd like to hear from the Council, we know that we can continue to try to sputter along and, and do private sector contracts, that's determined to be somewhat unreliable, but yet they have the infrastructure in place that could allow us on the short term to meet some of our needs. Certainly, there is existing facilities out there with some of our peer cities that we would like to continue having those dialogues to see if there would be a benefit, a long-term benefit for us. Those are pretty, not simple, but they're, they're in place. I think what we're interested to hear from Council, because this would take a little bit more diligence on our part, is would you, would the Council consider, for the city to consider looking at its own MRF? And when I say that, on a regional basis, obviously, we can bring partners in. We just want to get a sense from the Council that, you know, supporting any one of these groups and certainly letting us continue to move forward and spending a little more resources and time on that, the third option, I guess I would say, the, the City of Mesa MRF and looking into that, that would, we didn't want to go down that path too far without some kind of acknowledgement or endorsement from the City Council, but recognizing for a while, in the short, the medium term, we may be doing a hybrid of at least two of the three, possibly, and then looking for longer-term solutions as we get more familiar with cost and the timing of bringing those up.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Brady. I know, I think a lot, everybody wants to weigh in here. Let's go with Mr. Luna and then Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I think the, the regional arrangement would be something that would be real positive. We know it's worked well with the, the Greenfield Water Treatment Plant. I think this is something that we should go ahead and explore as we, we move ahead. You know, we know we need this, and why not try to share the cost with other communities and see if we can get this going? I know it's going to take a couple of years, but it's certainly worth exploring.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I hesitate on, on building our, our own MRF or mini-MRF. I like the regional partnership route. You know, I do, we do have transfer station, I have two transfer stations, maybe more in my district for two of the vendors, well, both Waste Management, I think, for Public Services. And I tell you, it's the amount of garbage that flies out of their trucks as they're going to the transfer stations. If you drive along Pecos Road out to the east of Ellsworth, you'll see all types of trash and stuff that shows lining Pecos Road from these trash trash and stuff that shows lining Pecos Road from these trash trucks that, that have stuff flying out. Same thing if you go down Sossaman Road as you're heading to Warner to cut across Idi Street to get to the other transfer station, same thing. I mean, there's, there's always trash and stuff out there that just blows out of these trucks. And so I hesitate to build another potential trash receptacle, you know, in our, in our own neighborhoods. But also looking at the, at the MRF, we're not really looking at the, the true cost because we would have to staff that, and we would have the, the fully loaded employee, employees that are manning that facility. And I'm not sure how many, how many personnel would be needed out of MRF to operate that. And so I think, you know, if you look at, you know, whether, if you look at the capital cost, but then you also have to look at the long-term associated cost of what, what is it going to take to keep that facility up and running and manned properly? And then my last thing is, you know, from, from interacting with, with my constituents, I think, you know, obviously recycling is important to our community. And I know interacting with my constituents, they're willing to pay extra to recycle. I've heard that time and time and time again. And, you know, that's something I don't necessarily know that we've explored either, is, you know, if we were to continue with our existing vendors and we were to go back to doing blue barrel, green barrel recycling, what would, what would be that cost that our, that our constituents would be willing to pay to, not necessarily keep us whole, but to at least break even on the recycling side? Because I'd like to explore that as well, but overall, I like the regional partnership. I'm just not a fan of, of us taking that, that on as far as building our own MRF or our own recycling material recovery centers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Other questions or comments before we allow Mr. Boucher to proceed with the presentation? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Scott, I'm not sure how much you have left, but please proceed.
I just have just a couple of slides, Mayor, but just to answer a couple of the questions that Councilmember Thompson had. So like the city of Phoenix, they actually contract out for the operations of their MRF. And so when you look at the processing costs that we have included in here, we've included debt service and the operational costs associated with these. And we've used that information from either other cities regionally here, or there was also cities that we were looking at that are, are currently in the process of building facilities. And so that's where we got some of that capital cost and those operational costs from, is, is from those.
Scott, also to Mr. Thompson's question, in, in the short term, if we do as you suggest and resume the blue and green barrel pickups and resume the education and enforcement programs that we, you know, started last year, can we do that with, with the current fee structure or? I agree with Mr. Thompson, people, I've, I've heard from a lot of people, hey, charge me an extra buck or two on my, on my barrels, but I want to get back to recycling. Can we do it with the current fee schedule?
So with the current fee schedule that we have, our budget has approximately $1 million in there to pay for recycling tipping fees or recycling cost. That is at about 30, it's right between 30, I think it's 3250 is the number that we used it, to calculate that. So if we see a cost higher than 32, $35 a ton, that's going to put us over what we have for our budget. And right now, in, you know, conversations with United Fibers and with town of Gilbert and Chandler who use them, they're looking at about 50 to 60 dollars a ton is what they're paying right now. So that would require, we do not have within our rate structure enough revenue that covers that.
And Scott, can you answer, when you talk to these vendors, do they guarantee that what they're picking up in the blue barrel will go into aftermarket recycling? Is there absolute, is there a guarantee of that?
No, there's, there's not a guarantee that the material will be recycled. We've discussed before, so if you go back to our September conversation last year, the efficiencies of some of the MRFs, depending on how fast they're run, you can have, you know, 20, 30% of the material that, that is going into the, into the facility that doesn't come back out of the, out of the facility simply because of inefficiencies within the operation. And that's one of the things that, that can be troublesome is if the money is made off of the tipping fee that is charged for the processing, the faster you run a recycling facility, the more material you can put through the facility, the more money that you make off of those tipping fees. But you will, usually what ends up being sacrificed during that is the amount of material that actually goes off for recycling, because some of the material just won't be captured if it's run faster.
And the cost difference between the tipping fee, the landfill versus recycling is, what's that delta?
So if we're looking at 50 to 60 dollars a ton for recycling, we're anywhere 24 to 32 dollars a ton is what we're looking at for solid waste.
So council, that's our dilemma, is these vendors that are going to charge us the 60 dollars per ton without a guarantee of where that material is actually going, what we're concerned about, and there have been some audits, been done, is if they're not able to process it, they take it to their landfill. And yet we've paid two, two and a half times for that to be processed at their MRF, and yet it still ends up in the same place that we could have paid at 25, 24 dollars a ton. So that's, we're, we're struggling with trying to figure out how to make this work. And that's, we don't like that vulnerability, and I think that's why we're suggesting we may have to go with that in the short term, but we think that having control of this ourselves, whether through a regional partnership to partners to the west, or developing our own location to the south and bringing in partners that way, at least gives us some flexibility and some autonomy from the private sector.
But Chris, how much is, how much of that, that go, ends up at the landfill is because it's contaminated? I mean, you know, there was, early on in the slide, you talked about, you know, going out and doing, doing some, find it. There was not, you, you mentioned it, Scott, that there was only like a 30%, I'm trying to find it here. There was only like a 30% pass rate on blue barrel. And so if we did a better job of educating on what has to take place, then are we, are we going to have a higher guarantee that, that the recyclables actually go to the, to recycle versus going to, because, because I understand if, if any of it, if anything in the blue barrels is contaminated, then the whole barrel goes, or the whole load ends up going to, to landfill. And so can we do a better job to reduce the probability that that's going to go to a landfill?
A key component to any recycling program moving forward is going to be having the cleanest material possible that we can provide, whether it is to ourselves, a regional partner, or a private entity. That material being clean is the, the number one thing. So for residents that you talk to and I talk to, when we talk about what, what needs to be done in order to make sure that we have a viable program moving forward, is putting in the blue barrel only the materials that are intended for it. So we have, when in doubt, keep it out, is, is our, is our slogan. That is a key component to it. There are, and I did not bring it, so our, our contamination rate for the city of Mesa usually bounces somewhere between 10 and 15% when we've done audits with our private partners, which is relatively good. When you look at national standards, a 10% contamination rate would be considered very good. So I think that the residents of the city of Mesa overall do do a good job. Of course, there's always room for improvement. But what we do, what we have seen, and I didn't bring it with me, but the city of Scottsdale did do an audit of the Republic MRF before it had caught on fire, and the amount of material that was being landfilled versus recycled was still higher. I believe it was in the 20 to 30% range of what was actually then getting landfilled. So even though that's, that's not all contamination. So if we're delivering 10% contamination, but 20% of it's going to the landfill, those are inefficiencies that exist within the systems. So, but to answer your question, yes, clean material definitely helps us keep our costs down.
I know, Councilmember Duff has a question. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Scott, how much of our trash is actually recycled and why am, not actually recycled as far as, you know, being clean and stuff like that, but what my concern is on the short-term solutions, the United Fibers, the contract is 6,000 annual tons, and then Republic Services is 12,000. When we look at our total solid waste, it's just a, a small part. I'd have to do some math there, but you know, maybe half of it or some, is it adequate, number one? Are the short-term solutions even adequate? I'm concerned if we start back to recycling in January with United Fibers and only 6,000 annual tons, is that more than just a few months? Do we have enough capacity to wait until Republic Services opens up in the latter part? I'm just wondering how the short-term solutions are going to work out as, as we discuss the costs and, and the barriers.
Yes, so with United Fibers and that 6,000-ton limit, and then there's some limitations on the distances that we'll be able to drive to deliver that material and, and be able to do it in an efficient manner. So we collect approximately 32,000 tons with our blue barrel program on an annual basis. So this would not handle all of that material. But once Republic Services comes online, even though we have, so with that contract with Republic Services, it's a 12,000-ton minimum. So that's the minimum amount that we can bring to them. As opposed to with United Fibers, that 6,000 tons is a maximum amount that we can bring to them. So they're kind of two different things. Can't bring more than 6,000 tons to United Fiber, but Republic Services has told us once their facility is operational, so if we go back to the conversation that we had about building a facility that can handle 60,000 tons, they're going to have capacity to handle more material at that facility. So they have indicated that they would accept more material from the city of Mesa over that 12,000 tons. So once Republic Services comes online, I think we will have the ability and the capacity with our private partners to handle most of the blue barrel material that we collect. But in that time in between, yes, there will be a, a portion of that time that, that the recycles, recyclables will be landfilled simply because we don't have a destination for it. The thought is, if we started doing it now, we can continue to get it cleaned up, because we do realize that some residents know that it's being landfilled, and so therefore they're using it as a, as another trash barrel. And really going back to the contamination discussion, it's not going to be beneficial for us if we just try and flip a switch and start delivering material to these facilities because the contamination rates are going to be very high. Our private partners are not going to be happy with that, and the cost will be more based off of that.
So as far as the public, it would be a good recommendation, if you've been using your blue barrel for trash, now is the time to start turning it back into clean recyclables. We need to up our game, be able to have as clean as possible. And so that in January, we're going to start the inspections again, so it's best to get back into the good habits of clean recycling with the adjusted materials that we set forth this past year. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And so what we're looking at is, if, if we got to the, the recommendation portion, is that we could begin splitting out those routes and getting the green barrel material, because I know council has expressed some concerns, we've had a lot of conversations about the blue barrel, but we've had the green barrel discussion also, that we would be able to bring the green barrel material to our current vendors that we have contracts with and deliver to them. A portion of that material, as long as it's clean material, we would be able to start bringing to United Fibers even before that January timeframe because we have an existing contract with them. And then that we would continue to evaluate the options based off of feedback that we received from, from council today, and that we would come back to you in approximately six months with updates on where we're at as far as those other options, and then also give you an update, I would imagine, with where Republic Services is with the construction of their facility.
Great, so actually we need to begin making sure that we recycle correctly and getting the right trash into the right barrels immediately because of the recommendation, if we're following the recommendation of October 26th. So I just wanted to put that out to everybody. If you've been using your recycling as trash, now, right now is the time to clean that back up and get back into the recycling that we all want to do. And second of all, I just wanted to make a statement that I am in support of looking at a regional partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Francisco.
Yeah, hey Scott, you mentioned one part of the regional joining up with Phoenix, but is that efficient as far as the routes, as far as the transportation of these items? I know you mentioned you have facility on 27th in Lower Buckeye and way up north for us in the east side. Is that even efficient on the transportation side? That's my first question.
From a transportation standpoint, we would not be direct delivering with our own vehicles. We would need to construct transfer stations. Those transfer stations would then put it into a larger vehicle that can handle more tonnage and would deliver it to the city of Phoenix location. And there's contracts, we've explored, other cities that have transfer stations have contracts in place, so they contract out that service. And so we've looked at their contracts and seeing if there's an ability to piggyback off of it, or if it was looking at a regional, long-term regional solution, that would be probably something where we would do a, a regional contract for the, the transportation of those materials.
And then my, my second question, if we were to build our own MRF, would that open up other opportunities to gain even more business from, maybe commercial and other folks that can use that, that MRF as well? Or i- is that a, something that you looked at as well?
That is, and I, and I should mention also, so with the United Fibers contract, one of the other reasons with that contract is, or one of the other things that we do with that contract is, they also take our commercial cardboard loads. So when we had the rate discussions, we were talking about commercial cardboard. And cardboard is a perfect example of commodity changes. Three years ago, we were getting $150 plus a ton for cardboard. The current, what United Fibers is proposing and what we've been doing with them over the last year is that they actually take that cardboard from us free of charge. Now, they do have some, some contamination standards that we have to continue to work with our commercial customers to meet those. But if we did build our own facility, it would be something that we could also leverage as far as our commercial business and being able to deliver material from our commercial customers to that facility also.
Scott, the, the, the last slide you, you put up with the recommendations, it says to split the blue and green routes beginning Monday, October the 26th. I thought I heard you say that we were thinking about reinitiating that in the, the beginning of next year. I mean, what, I'm, I'm sure it was made clear and I just somehow missed what you were saying about, when are you proposing that we go back to, to blue and, and green barrel collection?
Well, we, we're proposing that we can go back to blue and green barrel collection as soon as October 26th. The January date that I threw out, and I apologize if I confused, was when we would bring back a full enforcement program on the blue barrel. So what we would like to do, if we do choose to split these routes back out and collect them separately, is really have a strong public outreach campaign to our residents to let them know that the city of Mesa is bringing recycling back, what our plans are as far as bringing it back, and letting them know that if they have a blue or a green barrel that they're utilizing, that they need to make sure they're only putting materials in there that are accepted. And between, in the months of November and December, we will try and educate them as much as possible, both on the street, looking in those barrels, but also through a, a public outreach campaign. But then come January of 2021, if we do find that you have trash, or you're using that green barrel or that blue barrel as a, as a second black barrel, that we'd be able to remove that, or we would start tagging barrels and not servicing them, and so that the enforcement program would go into full effect then.
Thank you, I'm sure you said that, I just didn't catch it the first time. Mr. Freeman has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, softball question for you. Could we place a house, at the Household Hausurist Waste Facility, a cardboard bin there to collect cardboard at the HHW? Would that be possible?
Vice Mayor Freeman, it, it is possible to, to put something there. We have looked at it. The, the staff at the HHM have looked at the possibility of being able to do that. There is concerns about the number of people that will be going through there. And it also gets to concern so of, the reason why we shut down our recycling centers to begin with was because it was being utilized mostly by non-City of Mesa solid waste customers. So if we are going to bring back splitting the, the routes and collecting the material separately, and we've got a short-term solution and we continue to work on a long-term solution, it, it wouldn't be my recommendation to have that because I do believe what you're going to have is folks that are not our, our customers, that don't have a recycling option that are bringing that there. But it is possible.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, we had not a good experience on the, mostly on the east side barrels where we accepted that. And it, it got out of control. We, we had businesses, we had people outside the City of Mesa showing up and dumping tremendous loads of cardboard into those facilities.
Yeah, and we had a significant amount of illegal dumping that was happening there. Now, we were working with, with code compliance and with our police department and put in camera systems and we're really putting in a lot of effort to prevent that illegal dumping. But it required a, a lot of effort on several different departments in order to curb that illegal dumping. And it, and it was continuous because not everybody knew that we had cameras and so they would do illegal dumping and we'd have to follow up with enforcement, so.
So maybe, Scott, let me clarify it. So yeah, I wasn't very clear. Perhaps a dumpster could be placed out there during our Friday and Saturday collection days at the HHW? And people who have cardboard could, you know, go over with, under the supervision of the staff and put it in the dumpster and then you take it and put it back in the yard? I'm just, just thinking that way because I know I'd participate that way and others in, have, have contacted me. I know that you have dumpsters, cardboard collection dumpsters at other commercial businesses and centers. So just something to consider in the future, if you could just have a, in what, would it be an eight-yard dumpster that could be picked up by a forklift and, you know, removed at the end of the shift and, and taken in the back? That's all I'm asking. Thanks.
Scott, have we, did we allow you to finish your presentation?
You did, Mayor.
Okay.
I think the idea, we're going to continue to follow up on these options. If that's, I just want to make sure that's clear and come back in six months.
Yes, thank you. I, I get my, my reading of the consensus of, of the group and I, and I, this was a great discussion. So thank you, Scott. I know you've been working hard on this, you know, over the last few months and, and obviously it is a matter of concern for this council. And I, my takeaway from this discussion is clearly we have a commitment to recycling and to sustainability in our community and on this council. And I, I, I think we do want to resume the blue and green barrel collection as soon as possible and with, with the understanding that, that we all need to become more sophisticated recyclers and we need to become, we get better at it and we need to, to re-educate ourselves and our families as to what's appropriate to put in, in the blue, in the Blue Barrel. So I, it's not too, too early to start that again. So thank you, I'm, I'm, appreciate your efforts in, in standing that program up again. And then we'll, we'll look forward to hearing you come back with some maybe more refined recommendations after additional due diligence on the long-term solution. But I, I think clearly we're, we're all interested in, in doing that and, and interested to get more advice from you on, on setting a policy on that, on that issue. Counsel, is that fair? Any, any other comments before we move on? All right, thanks again, Scott. Great presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda for this meeting, item four, is current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, do you have things to share with us? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I actually was able to participate in the reopening of the Mesa Historical Museum this past week. And that was a really great opportunity to visit the, the new displays and women in aviation. I appreciated being invited to that. Again, Saturday, last Saturday was the flu vaccines by our Mesa Fire Medical Department at Hughes Elementary. And I appreciate our, our fire department and others who helped with that. That's a very large program and appreciate that. The flu vaccines and COVID testing is available for people in our community. On Tuesday, I participated in a shared use committee, a community meeting with participants on the proposed shared use path between McDowell and Val Vista Road, interacting with the residents and the designers for the program there. And with that, last night I was able to go to the Mesa Police Department's Community Review Session on the Use of Force, the Best Practices for Use of Force and get that information out to our community. There was a great attendance there. This coming Friday, Councilmember Thompson, myself will be present with the Mesa Chamber Government Affairs Meeting and where we're going to discuss growth in the City of Mesa and also answer any questions about question one. And lastly, I'll be, be able to participate in a virtual lunch next week hosted by the Mesa Chamber to discuss things that are happening in District One and perhaps other areas of our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, last Thursday, I was part of the, I was on a conference with Community Leaders of America and I was able to really highlight our Chief of Police, Ken Cost, and he joined me on there. We did a little screenside chat, I guess, on Zoom. It's, I can't really call it a fireside chat, but did a, a screenside chat with Chief Cost and talked about policing and, you know, how policing has changed over the years and more specifically with the pandemic and everything that's going on. And, and some of the, some of the innovative things that Mesa has done over the years to make us, you know, on the forefront of, of leading law enforcement. And so kudos to, to Chief Cost, he did a phenomenal job. This past Tuesday, I was also part of the Eastmark Community Discussion on Ballot Initiatives and RJ Zeder was able to join in and really answer questions and talk a little bit about and educate on question one. And so big thanks to RJ, I think he did a phenomenal job answering questions and talking about question one for the Eastmark community. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And I know, Mr. Thompson, I, I speak for our entire council in expressing condolences. I know, we know you lost your mother this week and, and we know you were very close and that you're, in spite of that, continue to serve your, our community. So our respect and condolences to you and your family.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you all also for, for your condolences. Appreciate it.
Let's hear from Mr. Luna and then Councilmember Duff.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a really busy two weeks. I attended the Economic Development Advisory Board and had a present, heard a presentation of Falcon District Strategic Plan. As you know, we started this plan in 2014 and we have made tremendous strides here in District Five. And so I want to thank Bill Jepjinag, Jay O'Donnell for their hard work to get businesses into District Five. So it was a great, great presentation. I also chaired the Maricopa Association of Governors Economic Development Committee. We talked about COVID and the effect on Arizona tourism and trade in North America. Checked in with the NLC staff relative to our HELO meetings, which we're going to be holding in November. Yet last Thursday, I received an update from Mark Gasper from the Boeing Company in terms of their flight operations. It was a great meeting and I, I really learned a lot. So I know he's going to meet with all my colleagues on council and talk about that. Also attended a virtual meeting with Chicanos Borlakausan celebrating their 51st anniversary. Last, this past Monday, I attended a tour of Marsh Aviation, a Falcon Field Airport. They rebuilt old Navy aircraft and those, that's the aircraft that goes to many of our fires here in the country, specifically California, and they dropped the slurry. And that's over here at Falcon Field Airport, they actually retrofit them. And I think next week, next week, the, the US Secretary of Interior will be there at Marsh Aviation to tour their facility as well. If you have an opportunity, I would encourage you to tour that facility as well. Yesterday, I attended the Boeing's Arizona District Director and Community Leader Virtual Briefing, talked about what Boeing is doing for the community as well as a partnership they have in many of our nonprofits. And I was also in attendance of the Mesa PD Use of Force Policy Review Community Session at the Sheraton. They did a great, a great job, so I want to thank Chief Cost as well as Assistant Chief Rankin for, for putting that together. And I've been pretty busy, but so, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Thanks for your hard work. Councilmember Duff.
It has been a busy couple of weeks. I wanted to share that I attended the Historic Preservation Board Meeting in which they discussed the zoning ordinance requirements and process for obtaining a certificate of appropriateness when making modifications or additions to a historic home. And on October 8th, I attended virtually the Positacristo More Than a Meal Event. The mayor was there as well. I wanted to thank them and all the supporters for doing all they can in these challenging times. That same day, I also attended the National League of Cities Youth Education and Families Committee's 20th Anniversary Celebration and the work that they have done over the last 20 years. This past Tuesday, I also attended the Visit Mesa Board and they ratified their strategic plan, which was, took, it was a seven-month process. I wanted to share their, the vision and mission from that strategic planning. And the vision is to elevate Mesa as a must-experience destination in Arizona. And the mission is to promote the value and vitality of our visitor economy to create a better community. Over the past month, we sent the targets and strategies to meet our objectives for the year and I see them getting stronger than ever as they move forward and contributing to especially our local economy during these challenging times. I was also at the Police Community Review Session last night and reviewing the Use of Force Best Practices. Thank you again to Chief Cost and Assistant Chief Rankin for all the work they've done. They've been working on this project for quite a while. It's been maybe a couple of years in getting to this point. So a lot of these practices that we've been talking about nationally, our police department has been working on these improvements long before a lot of the tragedies that have occurred. And so I think we're well ahead and I appreciate their attention and involving the community. Also, next week, I just wanted to let everybody know on, I'll have a community conversation on Thursday, October 22nd at 4:00 PM and to discuss the recycling that we discussed today here at, at study session in which the public can join. Me and Director Boucher will be there. And so please register in advance, there's a posting on Facebook where you can do that and I hope to further that conversation in the important subject of recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Counsel, other, other comments under this section of the agenda? I'll just reiterate, appreciate seeing counsel on a lot of activities this week. The Mesa, to, to give a underscore to something Mr. Freeman said, the Mesa Historical Museum is open right now and it's a great place to take your kids and your family, very socially distanced and, you know, safe thing to do, but to, to go out and, and maybe if you need a little boredom buster with, with the kids and, and anyone looking for something to do, encourage you to, to go to the Mesa Historical Museum, some great exhibits there. Also appreciated being with Councilmember Duff at the Positacristo event earlier this week, just to, the reason I raise it is this Saturday, they also have a, a little fundraiser, a grab and go breakfast burrito event. So if you'd like to support Positacristo and you have hankering for a good breakfast burrito this Saturday morning, please drive by and, and pick one up. In my enthusiasm to move this meeting along, I neglected one of our agenda items. Item three is to acknowledge receipt of committee and board minutes. Counsel, is there a motion to do that? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Redia.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I vote aye as well, so that passes unanimously. Counsel, anything else to discuss before we move on to the schedule? Okay, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We will be having a council meeting this coming Monday, October 19th. And then just a reminder, this Saturday, October 17th, from 9:00 AM to noon is our next free flu shot and COVID-19 testing. This one will be held at Webster Elementary School, which is located at 202 North Sycamore. So we invite Mesa residents to come out and attend that, that event this, this Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are great events and we look forward to doing a lot of good. So if you need a flu shot, if you need a COVID test, if you need access to, to free masks, if you need other access to city COVID resources, please take advantage of those events. Counsel, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.